Okay, we will call the June twenty fourth Board of Trustees meeting to order. At this time now. Item to adopt the agenda as outlined, there's a motion that I would like to make to pull. Item four B. And to change item four C from information to action.
Can I second that or do you need someone else to make that a motion?
Reverend Matt?
Yes.
This is Jerita. May I also ask that the board pull item six A, which is action on revising the academic calendar? I will explain a little more during superintendent's comments, but we're not ready to ask the board to make a change in next year's academic calendar at this time.
Okay, so my motion will be to pull item four B, also to change item four C from information to action and also to pull item six A.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, properly moving second, all in favor by no by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Alright, so move entertain now, a motion to approve the minutes.
The move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Frazier, second by Ms. Darby, Ms. Coats, how do you vote?
Yes.
Reverend Collins? Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Holland shed?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
And I vote yes, Reverend Collins is not on the call yet and Mr. Garrett is not present. Ms. Darby, you voted yes, correct?
Yeah, I vote yeah.
Okay, alright. Okay, at this time now, we're going to move to the public hearing on the FY twenty one budget. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you Reverend Mike.
Yes, sir.
So I'm waiting for the PowerPoint presentation to be presented on the screen.
Yes, sir.
Actually. Hey, thank you very much. So Don Kennedy, the CFO for the school district, I'm here to present the fiscal year twenty one budget. I would say upfront, the budget is a little bit different in the, in the, the development of it this year due to the COVID nineteen. Crisis that put us in a fiscal crisis and so we've had to make a number of assumptions and estimates. And because of that, we will bring back to the board in this fall, an amended budget after the state has adopted this budget for fiscal year twenty one. So that we can have more insight into what our appropriations would be from the state. So if we go to the next slide, please. So there are seven key components that's comprised in this budget. Although we are in a fiscal crisis mode, we are still able to recommend to the board investments in, in this board's board directives as well. Well, as the mission critical initiatives that the board's been working on for last year and a half at least. And we're able to do this without increasing taxes to the, to the public. It's inappropriate time, I think, to do that because of the fiscal nature of the environment that we're living in. And we're able to make a balanced budget, increase investments without a tax increase due to a couple of primary reasons. One is that in the current fiscal year, fiscal year twenty, we were able to reduce the spring spending about ten point seven million dollars. We've used that ten point seven million dollars to roll into fiscal year, years twenty one budget for, to fund these investments. And the other major component of that over the last few years, the district's been in a situation where we've added steadily to the fund balance. And so we have a really strong fiscal position in the district now, to the point where we can allocate money out of that or funds out of the, uh, fund balance or our reserves to maybe to continue our investments in hours. In the education of our students. The next item here, the daily planning time for all elementary school teachers. So that was a major piece of work that was done back as, back in the fall in collaboration with principals and all this, and central office staff as well as my staff. To determine how we could fund specific positions within all elementary schools to make sure that all of our teachers in those, in the elementary schools have a daily planning time. So that's included in this budget. Also in the budget is a focus on student and staff safety. And that's primarily around the COVID nineteen. So we have at least a starting point, three point one million dollars in this budget to, to allocate to those types of measures. And as we get into more of the analysis of that work, over the next few weeks, we'll figure out whether or not, if additional amounts are needed, how we might shift dollars around. We also continue our effort of reserving funds for future academic needs. So if you recall, in the past two or three years, we've put money aside as an example for early college. And so we continue to do that type of approach. There's funds in here to begin a, a strong development, a strong pipeline development for, for assistant principals. To establish a pipeline for them to be able to step into the principal role at appropriate time. And then I mentioned here the use of fund balance. And although we're using a substantial amount of our fund balance to, to support next year's investments. When we close the books, the, the accounting books later this summer, we expect to still have a, a, a strong fiscal or financial position. Next slide, please. This slide highlights in three different areas, some of the continuation and sustained increases that we have for investments for, for, in our academic programs on the left. College and career readiness. This coming year will be the fourth year, the early college high school program whereby our students graduate from high school both with a, uh, that are in this program. Both with a high school diploma as well as a, a two-year associate degree to get them a heads up on their college, college education. Opening up a new high school in Mount Pleasant, Lucy Beckham, so a substantial amount of, of funding for that. And also the new North Charleston Center for Advanced Studies to support kids going into different career fields. In the, in the middle column here, here, academic development and supports. So we have beginning earlier this year, making additional investments in supports for exceptional children. Those investments continue into fiscal year twenty one, as well as with our gifted and talented students. And as the district has in, increases in the enrollment of students whose language, first language is not English, we've added additional teachers for that. Accommodate those students. And then the last column here, equity, we have, the board has identified fourteen so-called seller acceleration schools. Once that we need to have additional supports in to make sure that kids that may have been struggling, we have an opportunity to address their needs. And so we have investments in those fourteen schools. And then a major initiative in North Charleston is the creation of this Mary Ford Early Learning and Parent Engagement Center. To serve as a prototype on how we would potentially improve significantly our, our approach to educating the really young, young learners. Next slide, please. The next two, these two next, these two next slides just highlight some of the investments that, that are being made. The acceleration schools, I mentioned that the one point four million dollars, we have a partnership with the University of Virginia to help with professional development in our academic, uh, components of our, of our schools. Uh, the, the investment here in cultural competency, of course, the board last June initiated the cultural competency project. And so there's been a team that's been working on that for all of this calendar year. And so we have investments to support that work. That actually just got started yesterday with training a number of, of CCSD staff. I mentioned the expansion of the, the needs for exceptional children, so in social and emotional learning and, and their mental health. There's changes downtown with the abusive member have additional classrooms that, that entails additional staff or teachers to support expanded learning there. Embedded in that one point nine million dollars is our things such as the teacher residency at Meminger with the College of Charleston. And then there's associated addition to the staffing, the teacher residency program, their associated logistical things around transportation. Furniture and computers and other electronic devices. The two hundred and two thousand dollars in additional, additional amounts for gifted and talented programs. The early childhood center, I mentioned that, you can see we are expanding the curriculum there, purchasing curriculum. Having a way to screen children to make sure that they're properly placed in, in that center. Next slide, please. And then in West Nashville District ten with the, the new, new CE Williams High School, excuse me, Middle School, CE Williams Middle School. Make sure we have the appropriate learning opportunities there. So there's expansion of a number of staff there to support that. We have a partnership that's been formed with USC around teacher residency program there. And then as we work through those changes combined in schools, then transportation costs. Some additional investments in the West Nashville High School, diversity at academic magnet, some changes in the magnet, magnet program that includes additional transportation costs. We have to have a way to implement some of the initiatives that we have. So we have a mountain in there for the mission critical implementation. And then another, uh, another slide here for additional support in the acceleration and admission critical type of programs as we further do those analysis. And you'll see later in this presentation, the tenders to, sometime this, before the calendar year is out, to develop a. In multi-year financial plan for the, for the acceleration schools. And so we'll start reallocating from, from the school dollars. Next slide, please. So, so the, in, in building a budget, there's always a number of assumptions go in, that, that assumptions that go into that process. Here on this slide, it shows the major assumptions that, that were, that we made to develop the budget. A one percent increase in assessed property values in Charleston County. Typically what we do, we have a minimum of two percent increase that we estimate. But because of the COVID nineteen, the fiscal crisis brought on by the COVID nineteen, we worked with the county ordinance office and reduced that estimate to one percent. I mentioned earlier, no tax increase. This, number three, this estimated six point nine million dollar decrease in state appropriations. That's an estimate on, on staff's part. We will have the exact appropriation from the state in common. And we'll adjust our budget accordingly. There's no salary increases in the budget with the exception that we did have a placeholder for staff increases with teachers. Once the state adopts this budget in the fall, if they authorize a step increase, then we have that funding. In the budget for that, that purpose. Base student costs went up slightly to twenty five hundred dollars. We had an increase in student enrollment counts from the forty-five day count that we had earlier in the year to, on the last count of the year, which is the hundred thirty-five day count. And then the thirteen point four million dollars in care is funded associated with the COVID nineteen federal funding dollars. This is an estimate or projection rather from the state as to the amount that the, the district would see. And there's an application process. And so we have a team of people working on that application process now. And I already mentioned that the budget would be amended in the fall due to the state's delay in adopting the budget. Next slide, please. So this slide here, here shows the, the high level revenue numbers and their sources. You can see because of the one percent increase in assessed property values, we're estimating that we have eleven point two million dollar increase in local revenue. But at the same time, we have a six point nine million dollar estimated decrease in state revenue. Substantial mark, percentage of X amount, twenty five percent of the state's revenue is generated through sales tax. And since our businesses have not been operating fully, the state sales tax revenues are now federal dollars in the general operating fund of, of, of very, very minimum. So we never really do a lot of analysis on that. We have obviously the federal revenue in the, in the, like the entire ones, entire two type funds. But they don't, don't get reflected in the general operating fund. And then the transfers, these are, these are countermeasures so far for us. This is in some of the state appropriations through the Education Improvement Act funds, EIA. It comes in through special revenue and we have to transfer those into a portion of that into the general operating fund. Next slide, please. And what this slide shows here is that it shows the same numbers, the total revenue numbers and expenditures. And any gaps in expenditures from revenue would be, as I mentioned earlier, funded through the, the savings that we made this year in budget. As well as the use of fund balance. And then, but the real purpose of this slide here is the bottom section here. It shows that the village in fiscal year twenty, twenty-one rather, remains the same as fiscal year twenty. So no, uh, no village increase. In, in the state of, the state authorized CCSD Charleston County debate to increase our village, I think it's three point oh nine mil, mills. But again, we're not, we're not doing that this year. Next slide, please. So this slide here shows a reconciliation between the first reading that the board approved and where we are with the second reading. The, the bottom line number is the same. So if you take a look at the first line here, total first reading budget, revenue five hundred and forty, one point four million dollars. And expenditures, the same thing. And at the bottom here, says total second reading is the same five hundred and forty, one point four million dollars. But we did have some slight adjustments within those numbers. The two point six million dollars here, negative number you see, we had to, we made reductions in some of the. Based on some additional analysis that were done, especially around the mission critical expenditures, we made some adjustments, we do some of those. And move some of those, those dollars down to support additional school-based personnel because of additional needs that have come in. We put an additional million dollars in the seven-day reserve. So when schools start, whenever it starts this fall, we need to have an ability to adjust. Our funding to schools based on the number of students that come into each school. So we have to have a reserve for that. So we've moved the part of, part of that two point six million dollar reduction into the reserves. And then the last piece here, when we finalize the budget, it's always at the beginning of the budget, there's input from different sources. And then when we, once we get all of that into the accounting system, there's a reconciliation. And so there's always a reconciliation. And, and some of those adjustments are due to building a budget initially on estimated average salaries. And then when we put all the data into the system, we work on actual salaries. So it's a relatively amount of adjustment, about the three million dollars or so. But the bottom line is the same. Next slide, please. And so this slide says long-range financial planning, I mentioned that we have three point one million dollars set aside in this budget for the COVID nineteen. So a lot of the plan that's taking place now is trying to figure out what those additional, what those strategies would be to support the reactivation of schools. And then what those costs would be. And, and so we'll work through that in the next two or three weeks. I mentioned that we have to revise the budget in September, October timeframe. And so any, any adjustments in the budget based on the COVID nineteen, school reactivation, et cetera. We will bring those recommendations to the board in, in the fall. And then I mentioned that the development of a three-year financial plan for acceleration schools, I believe you all, the board members have seen the, uh, the three-year plan for, for the acceleration schools. But the intent here is to actually do a financial plan associated with the strategies. And then in doing that, the last bullet here, taking a look at different funding, funding sources to, to accommodate that type of, uh, long-range plan. Next slide, please. And the, this slide here is for the debt service budget. And so you can see the numbers here where we have the revenues. Projected for fiscal twenty-one in the middle, but the, the middle column here, hundred twenty-six point three million dollars, increase of four point five million dollars on fiscal year twenty. Same thing with expenditures, we show the differences there, five point six million dollars. However, at the bottom line here, there's no change in the village. So the village remains the same as it was in the fiscal, fiscal year twenty. And currently we're still on track based on this level of village to, to. All things being, remaining the same between now and twenty fiscal year, year twenty thirty to be out of, out of debt for the district. Next slide, please. So this is the last slide in the presentation. It simply shows the history about fund balance of the last few years, going back to fiscal year thirteen. And you can see beginning in seventeen, fund balances recovered. And we're projecting it, projecting at the end of this year that we will continue that, that pattern. But we will use a portion of what you see in that projected column at the far right, as I indicated earlier, to help balance the fiscal year twenty-one budget. But once we do that, we still, we still expect to have a, a healthy fund balance to support the, any unknowns that the district may find its, find itself in. So with that, that, that concludes the, the presentation of the public hearing for fiscal twenty-one budget.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. I know a number of board members have submitted questions already. And have gotten answers to some of their questions. Are there any questions for Mr. Kennedy at this time? Alright, hearing none. We will. We will move on to, I'm sorry, yes.
I'm sorry, we, we did receive one question from, from, from a community member. The question is around.
Okay.
Transparency and, and explaining our budget. And I want the public to know that the budget is posted on the front page of our website. It's also on, it will continue to be there. And the question was about how do we communicate? And as, as we go out into the community during the next year, we've started communicating. And so we are, we have begun that outreach to the communities around our, our financial and the budget.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
I have a question.
Reverend Collins?
Oh, and actually about the, the acceleration schools, it may be, I don't know if you, Dr. Postle, where you can answer. I saw on the slide you had the roughly one point five million dollars for the acceleration schools. Can you briefly say, explain what that's for?
Well, a portion of that is for professional development for the staff in the acceleration schools. We're also hiring a new executive director of acceleration schools. That position has been, has been filled. And so that person will be coming on board, you know, shortly. So, so professional development for staff that's there. Recruitment for, for teachers that, that we need to bring into the school. And then I mentioned in the presentation, the, the partnership with the University of Virginia to help with the staff development. In trying to come up with the right strategies to support the, the academic growth of the students in these schools.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Kennedy for the report. Ms. Darby, would you want to speak to the public comments?
Oh, Mr. Reverend Mike, I wasn't finished up. My, I lost my connection, but I had one more question for him. Sorry.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
So, Mr. Kennedy, you're speaking about, about twelve or fourteen schools, right?
One point five million.
Alright, so my, is that the total package we're going to spend on the acceleration schools? Is that all the money going to be spent on the acceleration?
No, sir. So those, that's the, that's the additional amount, amount that's beyond the normal allocation. So if you take a look at the acceleration schools, they get their normal appropriations based on the number of students that they have. And the demographics of those students, the characteristics of those students, that's from the general operating fund. And then most of those schools also receive, uh, support funds from the state for improvement type activities. So that's a substantial amount that's not shown in the general operating fund. And for those schools that are Title I schools, they also receive federal dollars through the Title I appropriations. So what's shown in these slides are the additional investments that the board is making in, through the general operating fund above and, above and beyond what those schools already would receive from those other funding sources.
And that's, that's really what concerns me is that, and I understand that schools have their own budget and we have to allocate it for the regular and Title I and Title II money. I guess, and maybe not really for you, but I guess I suppose the ways that, that's all we're going to, that's all additional source that we're going to spend on the schools, fourteen schools. I don't think we can expect too much change if we're going to spread out one and a half million dollars for fourteen schools, you know, to make, to make any real progress. It's going to take a lot more money than that.
If I, if I could speak to Dr. Postle, is that alright?
Certainly, Carolyn.
I, I think Reverend Collins, within the little bit less than thirteen million now that we're investing in mission critical items. There's additional school level investments, some of which are reflected in that fifteen and some are now embedded in school level budget. So for example, Shakora Elementary is trying team teaching as is Meminger Elementary School. So we have additional teachers in some of the grade levels in order to provide more individualized instruction. In the case of Meminger, to facilitate the advanced academic program that we wanted to put in place. We also are investing at Sanders Clyde around its music and its arts program, both in adding additional arts teachers and the partnership with Engaging Creative Minds. We are looking very critically, I think. So that, when you look at that one point five, that's really about capacity building at the system level. In the, in the way that we talked about around particularly curriculum and talent. So how do we make sure that those schools have. That we're building teacher capacity on core curriculum, ELA and mathematics, which is a more centralized, I would say, responsibility. But each school has also asked for and received additional investments of assistant principals and additional teachers depending on the school's strategy to, to increasing student achievement. So I would say the district's investment is significant and that is also paralleled by obviously additional federal and state dollars. Given these schools have a high population of students in poverty.
Okay, I'll be back. To get more details, I won't do it during the meeting time. And then lastly, Mr. Kennedy, if you can tell me roughly how much money is set aside for nonprofits or other entity, entities that we made. How much is set aside? How much is that set aside?
So I'm sorry, the connection was bad, but I think the question.
Yeah, uh, how much do we have set aside for, uh, nonprofits? How much money are we gonna donate, the nonprofits or profits or other companies or entities, uh, in this budget?
Yeah, hold on a second. Um, so we have, um, we have six hundred thousand, so we have four, uh, four such entities. And each, each of those four, um, uh, we have, we have, um, funds set aside a hundred fifty thousand dollars each.
And that's Engaging Creative Minds, Charleston Promise Neighborhood, Reading Partners, and Tri-County Cradle to Career.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Does that conclude your questions, Reverend Collins?
That, that's enough for now.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure. Um, okay, Ms. Darby?
Yes, Reverend Mac, we, um, had fifteen public comments, um, that we received and the board members all had received them. Fourteen of them had to do with parents' input on us returning back to school, the start date, calendar dates, that kind of stuff. And then one was a question about the budget that, um, Mr. Kennedy has already referenced. But all the board members should have those, they were emailed to them on Monday.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, board members, item four A, um, board approved, uh, public statement. Each one of you have received a copy of a statement, um, that has, has been prepared, uh, to be issued, uh, to the public on behalf of the board of trustees. Uh, were there any questions or concerns in reference to that prepared statement? Hearing none, is there a, a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor by nor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any opposes? No opposes? Thank you. Also, item four B, uh, was pulled. Uh, item four C, uh, which is the committee to research, uh, origin of current facility names. Um, I am appointing three board members, uh, to serve on that committee. Uh, Mr. Holland Shad, uh, Reverend Collins, and Mr. Frazier, uh, to serve on that committee along with, uh, two outside community individuals. Um, that, that was still being researched, uh, do not currently have those names yet, but I wanted to make, uh, aware the name of the current board members that will serve, uh, on that committee. Uh, are there any questions?
Yes, sir, one question. Go ahead, Cindy.
Mr. Holland Shad, what's your question?
I'll let Cindy go first, then I come in after.
All right, Ms. Coats?
So, um, given that there's probably going to be at least two hundred facilities and rooms and et cetera, I, 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 I'm not sure how this can be done by people who don't have, uh, uh, access to all of the internal district records. Um, would this not be a better inventory done by staff that can access the minutes and all the data and can actually, you know, one-on-one communicate with the schools to ask them to inventory their schools?
So this will be, this committee will be working in conjunction with staff. Uh, there's no way that, uh, board members, uh, and committee members can, uh, uh, do this work without staff involvement. So a lot of this work actually will be done, uh, through staff.
Um, and so the brief description, how, who develops that? I mean, is it developed from board minutes or is it developed from Wikipedia like the letter we received? Or how, how will we be developing that brief description?
So, uh, just, just to let you know that this, uh, appointment of committee is stimulating from our current, uh, letter that we received from one of our board members, Mr. Holland Shad, in reference to, uh, the history of some of the names within our district, uh, within our schools. Uh, so, and one name school was mentioned, uh, so.
Right, and it, the material from that letter came from Wikipedia. I was wondering if that's going to be the source or what's the source of how they're going to get the, um, brief description?
So.
I bet you the difference, I didn't come from Wikipedia, I've done research papers before.
Okay, so just, just let me just say, so holistically, what we're gonna do is we're going to look at all of our schools, uh, within, uh, the district and, in collaboration with board members and with staff. We will, will come, they will come back with, uh, with the findings of the research to the full board and we will discuss moving forward from there.
So you don't have, you don't have a, um, an answer to how they're going to create the descriptions?
So, with, so staff will, will research the history of each school. Uh, and they will give the findings from their research. Uh, and the committee, uh, will, will bring those findings back to the full board.
So you need a, a motion to form the committee and I'd make that motion?
All right, I think Mr. Holland Shad has a, a, a comment, or is that a question?
Yeah, a question. Um, there are some emails that came in and comments that, uh, community individuals either like to be a part of the meeting or participate, are we allowing that? I know you said you're picking two, but are we allowing that or how do you want to handle that situation?
So we're researching this information, uh, with staff, uh, and board members that are being appointed. And just so that we can have some, uh, uh, structure there, we will allow two additional community members, uh, to be a part, uh, that will be appointed, uh, by me. Uh, so, uh, as we formulate that, they will begin to move forward accordingly.
Okay, thanks, sir.
All right.
I'll second the motion, Reverend Mac.
Okay, uh, motion was made by Ms. Coats, seconded by Ms. Darby. Uh, all in favor, I know by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposes?
Reverend Mac?
Uh, yes, Reverend Collins?
All, all the committee members will be able to vote during committee meetings?
Sorry, say it again?
Will all the committee members be able to vote during the committee meetings?
I don't think there's anything to vote on.
Right, so there won't be any voting, Reverend Collins, just more, be more of a research, uh, and gathering information.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, at this time now, we'll have the superintendent's report.
Um, Eric, before, just, it's Joyce and just before Dr. Postle starts, um, I think w- once you do the committee and a charge, it would be nice to give them, uh, starting and a ending date. Just so, you know, we can make sure we keep this on our radar. It would be nice to, you know, kind of put a date out there that we would like to, you know, have it finalized or updates or whatever.
Got it. So if, uh, we only have one board meeting in July and I believe that date is?
The twentieth.
July twentieth. So if, uh, if we can have a, a preliminary report, uh, of finding by then, it may be a completion. I know some of this work, you know, have already been done, uh, then that will be a good time, uh, for us to get an update as well. Thank you, Ms. Green.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, I'm gonna start by just saying there are three items on the superintendent's report tonight. The first is to talk a little bit about our graduation ceremonies. Second, and the one that people are probably most interested in is an update on the school restart information. And then third, um, this might seem a strange time to bring back a, uh, discussion about amateurs for entrance into abused academy in this school year twenty-two, twenty-three. But according to the board directives, um, a report was due to you in June. So Buffy Roberts will be presenting that. My first three slides talk about the work that has happened in Charleston County Schools since March. So, um, if we could advance to the next slide, I want to, uh, commend the high school principals and the teams of teachers, guidance counselors, the leadership staff who, uh, worked so hard with students and parents to ensure that our students had two graduation ceremonies. One was a virtual ceremony and the other was, uh, a very, very carefully scripted and, um, enacted, um, sometimes drive-through, but in-person, um, diploma award ceremony. The schools that are listed in black font, for those of you who can see the screen, um, have already had, um, conducted their ceremonies. Uh, Military Magnet is currently scheduled for June twenty-ninth. Wanda will be in three sessions so that we can appropriately socially distance on June twenty-nine, thirty, thirtieth and July one. And then, um, Garrett Academy will have its graduation ceremony and the celebration of Garrett Academy, uh, currently scheduled for July third. Um, in addition to all of the work that led to this culminating event in students' lives, the next talk about the, um, efforts that many, many staff members put in across the district. I think we're all, um, inordinately proud of the efforts that, uh, Charleston County School District's employees, leaders, uh, and the community members, uh, along with parents and students, uh, invested in our, uh, in, in our public school effort since mid-March. Um, despite everything we did, we, we were not able to fully engage all of our children. According to prin- principals' reports, um, you see on the screen the number of elementary, middle and high school students with whom, uh, we were not able to consistently engage so that they completed their assignments. So about, um, uh, al- almost five thousand of our fifty thousand students did not, um, continuously engage with us. Our teachers and principal flowed up with those students. When they were unable to reach them, they engaged the efforts of Jennifer Coker and her alternative program staff. Able to, to, to narrow it down to seventy-nine students, uh, at the beginning of May, uh, with whom we had not made contact. Um, Jennifer and her staff, uh, psychologists, social workers, um, behavior specialists and others contacted fifty-six of the seventy-nine. And so when all was said and done at the end of the year, there were twenty-three of our, um, almost fifty thousand students for whom we could not account. So other public agencies are helping now trying to locate those students. Some have moved out of the area, uh, but they're doing welfare checks on those students. Um, in addition to those efforts, as you know, we ran a family student support line from nine AM to six PM daily to try to help any family or student in need. The next slide shows, um, the sort of support services that have been provided. When we closed out schools at the end, we had served about nine hundred seventy thousand meals. On Monday, we surpassed the one million meal mark. So, um, that was a point of pride and great celebration for our new services team. Um, our help desk, um, fielded almost two thousand, uh, parent help calls. Our, uh, Wi-Fi bus routes, um, visited about thirteen hundred different sites. And, uh, at our IT repair sites around the district, uh, almost eight hundred devices were either repaired or if necessary replaced during that time. So the staff did everything they could possibly do to see that students who were unable, um, to, um, be with their teachers face-to-face, had the support that they needed. Throughout that time, we operated, uh, a childcare center for Roper Health. Um, all told, I've had about seven hundred, um, childcare days at enter. Uh, it's gone very, very well and we've learned a lot, uh, that's helpful to us as we think about how to reopen schools. Our summer mester for several thousand children is scheduled to begin July sixth and run four weeks through July thirty-first. Ms. Belcher reported to you at your last meeting how that, uh, op, how that operation will work. At this point in time, um, we are debating whether or not we'll be able to operate the in-person services. And I'll say a little bit more about that when we look at our infection rates in just a moment. I'm gonna switch gears now on the next slide and talk about the challenge and the opportunity that lies before us as we think about how to safely restart schools. There's simply no way to sugarcoat it. Um, the, the, the interruption of our normal sort of academic, uh, engagement with children, uh, has created learning loss for many of our students. Um, in addition to that, the recent tragedies that our country has, has, has experienced and become more aware of fall at a time for us when we're struggling to figure out how to bring children back safely and see to both their academic and social and emotional needs. Um, the mission that's before us is really daunting. Uh, we have to figure out how to safely, safely restart schools. Um, retooling our education system, rethinking everything, um, and making sure that learning for all of our students continues, um, even if our COVID nineteen infection rates are high. This is, as we show on the next slide, a massively complex challenge. We have to think about, um, every single aspect of our district. How do students get to school? How do they get out of their vehicle or off the, on and off the bus? Get through the hallways and into their classroom and social distance? How do we make sure that all of our students wear face masks until they are safely seated at their, um, desks, uh, six feet away from someone or behind a screen? How can we think about using all of our spaces to instruct as many students as possible on a daily basis? And how can we help our community understand that we must continually follow the science? Look at the data. And that's going to require us to be nimble and make adjustments, um, as necessary. Um, the next four slides show you the, the kind of learning loss that we believe we had. So it's looking at the, at the, um, at the data, um, both from a health point of view and from an point of view. This slide quotes from a Wall Street Journal, um, that talked about the toll that isolation was taking on children as a result of COVID nineteen and the increased incidences of depression. Following this slide about social emotional development, we look at, uh, a slide that shows the academic impact. And for those of you who can see your screens, see this screen, I'd like you to take just a moment to look at this. I want, this is in mathematics. If we look at the eighth grade line, um, it's a pink line, the solid line that goes across there shows us, um, in WEA, the Northwest Evaluator Association is a nonprofit that has hundreds and hundreds of thousands of years of student achievement data in their database. They have probably the most robust database of student, um, growth, uh, academic growth information, uh, in the world. Uh, but they have done projections showing in a regular year, that solid pink shows us that, um, along about mid-March, where, where we see the school closure picture, um, that's where, uh, on students in eighth grade across the country were achieving. Then we move, uh, forward to the right and we see where they would typically achieve on the last day of school. Just under that solid pink line, we see a dotted line. And it shows us that because we know we could not successfully deliver a lot of new content, we would expect that when schools open out here in, um, August or September, um, that students are, we would expect them to be at about where they were when we left off in March, simply because we were unable to introduce and sustain the teaching of new skills and concepts. That, um, that line that's just shown with the small dots shows you the amount of instructional loss that has occurred, um, in mathematics for eighth graders. Now let's go to the bottom of the chart and look at third graders. Look how much steeper the decline is for the younger children and the academic achievement um, as a result of the lack of direct academic instruction with a teacher. In between March and some anticipated date in August or September. And then the final line I'd like us to look at is fifth grade. Um, it's a green line that goes across. If we look at the, um, at the line that's just the dots, if you follow that downward, you see that, that because so many new concepts that are abstract in mathematics are introduced in fifth grade, the expectation across our country is that fifth graders will return to school below where we would have ordinarily expected fourth graders to be. So this kind of learning loss can be devastating if we don't take very intentional actions to address it as students come back to school. The next slide shows the learning loss in reading. And interestingly, in the upper grades, the learning loss for reading is not predicted to be so drastic as it is in math. The hypothesis behind that is that, um, many students, most students have learned to read and regardless of what they're doing, uh, they are still engaging in. they are still engaging in more reading now, perhaps, even if it's online and in sites that aren't necessarily educational than they might have been doing. But again, if we, if we direct our attention to the bottom of the chart, we know that that language loss for young children is much more significant. And the last slide that we're going back in terms of data, if we look at the next slide, actually helps us look at the health statistics. So this is the science that will underlie our decisions or recommendations to you about, about when to reopen schools. We, I want to emphasize, we made this slide based on what we could understand from the, or interpret, I should say, from the Accelerate Ed report as published day before yesterday. So in the report, we read that the South Carolina Department of Education and DEHEC are collaborating to, to create metrics that help each district, each county, understand whether the infection rate in their county is low, medium, or high. And if it's low, somewhere later in the report, we read that the operating, the, the way that schools would operate on, on a recommended restart, if the infection rate is low, the recommendation would be to restart with a traditional of safety measures in place, the physical distancing, students wearing, everybody wearing masks until they get situated six feet apart from one another. If it's medium, then we cut down the numbers of students who are coming into schools and schedule half of them at a time. If it's high, then the recommended restart mechanism will again be online learning. We don't know for sure what the, what criteria DEHEC will use, but in that left-hand column speculates. This is just illustrative, it's an example, but we're thinking that DEHEC will probably look at number of infections per 1,000, 100,000 people in a county. The tests that have been done in any particular county and the percentage of cases per the tests that have been done. And then perhaps some measure of the length of time that the infection remains, or more properly stated, the length of time that we're able to lower and keep it low. So in a very real sense, our ability to bring children back to school depends on the, the extent to which we're all able to to do our part, reduce the spread of COVID-19 in our community. As long as the spread is high, it is too risky for us to bring children back. It, we cannot expose our employees to that risk and we cannot expose children and their families to that risk. So that is the reason we asked the calendar recommendation from the agenda tonight. We expect the DEHEC report to be published tomorrow or Friday. We're not positive what the rating for Charleston County will, given the results that we're all reading about. We believe Charleston's spread rate will be in that high range, in the red range. And until it comes down and stays down for a while, we're likely not going to be able to bring children back in person. So we'll stay tuned. If we find out that we're, that our community is doing a whole lot better than we thought, we might ask the board for a special call telephonic meeting to take a look at a new calendar. But right now, we're not asking as we were originally going to ask to start five days earlier. We have now decided that we should delay that action until we have some more specific information from the, the health community. The next few slides, then we just simply talk about what, what we want to do. Our default position is in three layers. First of all, it's our intention to start school with face-to-face classroom instruction five days a week, just as quickly as it is safe to do that. We were hoping to be able to do that in August. We're still hoping that that will be possible. Every school is, every school's principal and a few teachers, assistant principal, staff members are analyzing the capacity of that school to seat students either six feet apart or behind plexiglass barriers. Jeff Barrowey will show you a little bit more about what that looks like in a moment. But that's what we really want to do. We have to get the infection rate low enough for that. Our second position, then our fallback position, if the default isn't possible, would be to implement alternate schedules, bringing a few children in, hopefully on an A V schedule so that all of the children are getting to face instruction at least 50% of the time. Our third position will be that we will operate virtually. Regardless of, of which of the, the back-to-school op able to offer, we know that there will be parents who will not be comfortable sending their children back to school. And we have some children whose health is fragile. So Charleston County Schools will be opening a full-time online school where all the second graders of the, of the district may be online at the same time together by teachers who are very good at delivering the second grade curriculum through virtual technology. It does, that we may need to make sure that some of our children who currently do not have connectivity, receive Wi-Fi connectivity if they live in an area without, with broadband service. So I can state that a little more clearly, I think, on the next slide. Sort of the bottom line. We're going to observe the DEHEC regulations, follow the science, watch continually the, the infection rate community. And we will use the infection rates in our community and the advice of medical experts to determine how, when, and under what guidelines our school reopen. We want to try our best to serve children in person when it's safe to do that and if their parents want us to serve them in person. For children whose parents don't want them served in person, we will offer this entire year an online school so that children have an opportunity to learn, we hope, in a very different kind of, of online environment than the one we were able to establish very hurriedly between March 15th and March 17th. In the next slide, Jeff Barrowey is going to show you a couple of pictures thinking about possible social distancing. Mr. Barrowey?
Thanks, Dr. Postaway. In addition to a lot of the other work that's going on to prepare our schools, whether it be cleaning protocols, transportation, security, nutrition services, this is probably the, the most daunting task and that's doing our best to maximize the number of students in the classrooms while keeping safe distance. This example here is an elementary school in which we've created barriers between four desks at a time using plexiglass with vertical stanchions on each end. This allows, we've listed here 20 to 22, but in, in reality, it can probably be as high as 24 students. Getting the materials and having the construction complete is certainly a, a significant task ahead of us, but we're well underway to moving in this direction. We've set these mockups up. We've had, we've had principals and teachers take a look at them to see how practical they are. As Dr. Postaway mentioned, if we use this type of plexiglass, this type of polycarbonate, it allows us to bring desks closer together and put more children in the, in the room. Next slide. So this is a typical high school space. We've established criteria for individual desks, starting by putting the back row against the wall, creating a space at the doorway of six feet, keeping all seats six foot apart. You can't really tell from this diagram, but the, the desks are really in a triangle format. And then we leave six foot space in front of the front row for the teacher. So with this example, you can see we've, you know, we've got, we've got 16 desks in place in a, in a relatively average-sized high school room. Once we complete the analysis of the elementary schools, we'll look to see what we can do in middle and high schools with dividers. But with high school students and, and most middle schools, you don't want to round up the desk too close together, even with the, the plastic, we're, we're better served spacing things out in this manner. Right now, our teams are working with the schools to get out and look at every facility. We're hoping to have all elementary, elementary schools looked at by the end of this week, in which we mock a room up similar to this in two different types of rooms for elementary would be a pre-K or K room, along with another elementary room and two other rooms in, in middle and high schools after we get done with the elementary schools. As Dr. Postaway mentioned, bringing in as many kids safely is going to be one of the major factors and how many kids we can educate face-to-face. Transportation obviously will be the second, second challenge with that, but we're well under, under our weight of making this happen.
Thank you, Jeff. I only have three slides left. I, I appreciate your patience letting us talk about this massively complex work. We just have to rethink every aspect of, of the schools. For example, do we turn water fountains off so that students aren't pushing the button after the other to turn the water on? And if so, then they've got to keep up with water bottles. How do we think about getting students from one room to another? We cannot jam the hallways with them as they change classes. How do we think about courses like band and P E and, and chorus? Virtually every aspect of what we do has to be rethought. We know that our teachers will need to wear masks if they're within six feet of a student. But we also need protective gear that's transparent so that when teachers are talking, students can see what the teacher is saying. That's critically important in early learning years. It's important for hearing children with challenges. It's important for foreign languages and so forth. So we, we have a lot of work to do and we greatly appreciate the board's understanding of how all-consuming it is for all of us to every day spend time thinking and rethinking and thinking again. There is a Safe School Restart Task Force that's been operating in Charleston County. In addition to that task force, many support service personnel are working with Jeff Barrowey and his team. And a teacher representative from every school is invited to participate in multiple Zoom meetings with us. We had a call today with teacher representatives and are trying to make sure that we keep the lines of communication open and, and show all of our teachers how to have easy access to the questions that they're wondering about and the, the responses that we have as of today. So listed on this slide just show you some of the areas that the Safe School Start Restart Task Force will be working on. There are, without exaggerating, I can tell you there are thousands of details that they worked out. Thing I did want to point out is that we're engaging a team from M U S C that will come and visit some of our sites, walk through the sites with us. Once we get them set up, we will have the principals and teachers share with those teams the protocols that they've put in place. And those, the teams from M U S C will then help us with what is called a Safe School Restart Playbook, making sure that whatever practices that we are contemplating are absolutely consistent with the best practice that the medical science is aware of today. And again, that changes sort of weekly as medical experts learn more about the spread of this disease. You had in your packets, on the next slide, you'll see what it looked like. You may have had a chance to glance at it. The, the outline for the Safe Restart Plan, you, you had the, many of the different categories. It was a multiple-page plan that this Safe Restart Group has been developing. On Friday, when we reengage with that group, our staff members will share the progress they've made and pose some of the key questions that we're pondering at this moment. As soon as that update meeting occurs Friday, the meeting is open to the public and media, but the results, summary from that meeting will be posted online so that anyone can engage. And the final slide I want to mention is what we don't want to get lost, have lost in all of our discussion about how to restart schools safely is our renewed awareness of the necessity of focus on cultural competence. Our, our deepened understanding of the hurts, the trauma that both COVID-19 and the events in our society that help us understand many of the inequities that exist have, have presented to us. So we're grateful that in December, the board created the Cultural Competency Team. Mr. Kennedy has been reading, has been leading that work. One of the things you mandated as a board was that all 6,000 of our employees would go through comprehensive training. Have normally completed that training by the start of the coming year. We now will make sure that the training is underway and will at least begin the initial stages of it before the beginning of the year. So we simply wanted to, to, to close out by acknowledging we know this is crucially important. It creates its own set of circumstances and challenges, but more importantly, opportunities to take advantage of our current set of circumstances to think intentionally about addressing inequities in a way that don't leave our most vulnerable children even further behind. So that concludes this part of my report. I'd like to ask Buffy Roberts, if you don't mind, if she would talk about the staff's work on the abused entrance criteria, which again will be important in 2022, 23.
Thank you, Dr. Presteway. Good evening, and thank you for providing some time today for us to review the proposal for entrance into Abused Academy for third grade effective 2022, 23. You do have a copy of this proposal in your packets so that you could follow along. The proposed entrance process is a three-step process. It requires all interested students to apply through the School Choice Application Program, to be screened, entered into the lottery, and then seated according to priority levels as well as available seating. First, students apply for Abused Academy. Once students apply, they're then screened for eligibility. Students can meet the eligibility requirement one of two ways. The first way is by being state-identified, gifted, and talented. Transfer students are also able to meet this criteria if they're state-identified. The second way to meet eligibility requires students to be assessed with a MAP assessment and then to meet the 75th National percentile or higher on both the winter MAP reading and math assessment for their application year. Once students are screened, assessed, and eligibility is determined, priority levels and lottery order are then applied. Those priorities include the following. Priority one would be the Mimenter Elementary Matriculation based on meeting eligibility and families choosing to apply. Priority two would be for those applicants who are zoned for an 80% or high-poverty school based on meeting eligibility. And then priority three would be for county-wide applicants, again, based on meeting eligibility. The sibling rule as well as a twin policy are applied within each of these three priority levels. So the way this process works is that all priority one applicants meeting the eligibility criteria are seated first. After priority one applicants are seated and based upon available seats and lottery number, priority two applicants meeting the eligibility criteria are seated. After priority one and two applicants are seated, and again, based on available seats, priority three applicants meeting the eligibility criteria are seated based on their lottery number. Within each of the three priority levels, again, the sibling rule and the twin policy are applied. It is also recommended that an annual review of student learning outcomes at Abused occurs for the purpose of determining any need for possible future adjustments in the entrance process. And that's basically what this proposal entails.
Thank you, Buffy. And I, I would just like to ask the board to And I would just, I'm just asking the board to approve this tonight by any means. Way back when things were normal, you asked us to bring some recommendations to you in June. Done that. We will place this on the July board meeting. Your committee, the whole, and the board meeting are combined in July. Our recommendation would be for the board to discuss it at committee, the whole, in July, and then actually vote on it in August, so that the public has a better opportunity to review and reflect and respond. That concludes the superintendent's report, Reverend Mack. Thank you very much for this time.
Thank you, Dr. Postaway. Is there any question for the superintendent at this time on her report?
So I have one. Reverend Mack?
Ms. Coats?
So when you say the priority one is the Meminger Elementary Matriculation, do you mean anybody attending Meminger? Or anybody zoned for Meminger? Or just the ones in the academically advanced program at Meminger? So could someone be zoned for Meminger and attending out and get in on priority one? That's the first question. And the second question is, is it any student at Meminger?
The intent of this proposal would be students who are actually attending Meminger Elementary and meeting the eligibility requirements.
But they do not have to be in the advanced program at Meminger?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend Mack.
Okay. Any further questions?
Reverend Mack?
Yes, yes. Mr. Frazier?
Thank you, Dr. Postaway, for your report. I was on another call earlier today, and it was based on a dashboard that the region is looking at relative to infection rate. And you're probably privy to the same information I'm about to say, but it is not going in the right direction, and it's well over 5% now, which was the tipping point for some of these things. So I assume that's what's informed your request to delay the decision, and I appreciate that you're focused on all the different options, because I'm afraid we're going to have to play all of them all the way out to the end. So no real response necessary. I just want to say that I'm hearing it from other places as well, and I appreciate you following the science.
Thanks.
Reverend Collins?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Postaway. Some of the latest reports from the health experts said that exposure for 15 minutes or more that someone that has the virus is one of the leading causes of it, not wearing a mask, being in the presence. So my thoughts is, have you considered that the impact on teachers, the type of stress they'll be under in a setting of trying to teach and deal with the virus at the same time? Would it be practical? Do we expect our teachers to do a good job under these circumstances?
We, of course, we've considered that. It is, these are difficult and times for everyone. Public education is an essential service. And when it's deemed safe to reopen schools following the guidelines that DHEC, CDC, and MUSC experts have given us, we will reopen under those circumstances. And as we've talked with teachers, most of them are willing to do that, providing we follow the science and adhere to the guidelines and insist that all students and anybody else entering that building adhere to the guidelines.
Is there any further questions for Dr. Postaway? Hearing none.
Yes, I still have one more. Yes, sir. I have one more.
Get Reverend Collins?
Yes, sometime my phone drops off and I have to come back on, it annoys me automatically. But I'm supposed to wait, so don't let me lose my train of thoughts now. Zoom and the online classes like we had last semester, in the last school year. If you had to do the online classes, would each teacher have a Zoom, a Zoom meeting or a Zoom meeting account, where they can meet with all the students online at the same time, almost as if they were in classroom, but everybody's on Zoom at once? Would that be how you would operate?
I think what would be a good idea would be for us to have a presentation, a very brief presentation in July at your Committee of the Whole meeting so that Carolyn Belcher and her staff can tell you about the improvements that they and teachers in collaboration have designed for this coming year, Reverend Collins. I think that all parents would be very pleased with the improvements we've made. You know, we learned on a Sunday afternoon that we had to shut down schools. And Tuesday, our teachers were distributing all the materials, and by Wednesday, they were implementing online learning. So I don't know the direct answer to your question, sir, but I can assure you that many staff members are working hard to make sure that teachers have the supports and the training that they need to be able to operate more effectively in a virtual environment.
But Zoom would be an option, is what I'm asking you. Are you considering Zoom?
Yes, sir. There are multiple online options. One under consideration, yes, sir.
I have one question. Sure. Are we still going to do the summer master?
We are still doing the summer master, and thousands of children will be helped by that. The only question, a few, some of those children are going to be served in person. The decision that we will revisit after we receive the DHEC ratings tomorrow will be whether or not it is safe to conduct in-person sessions for the children. But they will be very small, well-organized, like four, five, six students to one Zoom with your follow-up sessions.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any further questions for Dr. Postaway? All right, hearing none. Item 6A has been pulled. And at this time now, item 7A will be the second reading of the budget.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Coats, second by Mr. Frazier. Ms. Coats, how do you vote?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Hi.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Holland-Chad?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Ms. Darby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That motion carries. Item 7B is the Phase Five Master Plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Frazier, second by Ms. Jeffries. Are there any questions?
I have a couple, I have two questions, Reverend Mack.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Coats.
By approving this with the list embedded in there, have we approved the referendum list?
If I may answer that, Reverend Mack?
Yes, sir.
No, you haven't, Mrs. Coats. This master plan is with a look at unconstrained resources. It's a wish list. It's identification of what we could use across the entire district. The ultimate list that'll be pushed to the referendum will be brought back in the month of July.
So I think what you're saying is it's safe to say that it's possible list items that are in that book will not end up on the referendum. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any chance items that are not in that book will be added to the referendum? That we'll see things on the referendum list that are not in that book?
I'm not aware of any at this point.
And I guess my second question is, why are we doing any sort of assessment to create CAT IV buildings? I thought the board was asking you guys to research the value and the, against the stress and cost of using our buildings for hurricanes. But this thing seems to, your Phase Five seems to indicate that you're moving forward with even more potential shelters.
So our Phase Five plan is going to end up recommending that two facilities that are in the high, in the Highlands that are out of a flood zone would be considered for Category V protection. So it's not the entire building program. It's just two schools that would be in a setting which would be conducive to having it be safe for a Category V hurricane.
So we anticipate, I mean, we wouldn't do that if we weren't anticipating allowing them to be used. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So we're going to move forward as a district, continuing those uses?
We are. At this point, in fact, they've identified the shelters in our existing schools for this year, this hurricane season already.
Okay. I thought we had asked y'all to have those conversations about maybe us not be in that business.
I don't, ma'am, I don't remember any formal direction. I remember some discussion back and forth about considering that, but we've not moved off of that. We've closely paid attention to their request, and we've made sure that the district's interests were protected, but we weren't prepared to come back with a list for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are there any further questions? Hearing none. Ms. Coats, how do you vote?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Holland-Chad?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Ms. Darby?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. That motion carries. Item 7C?
Move to approve.
Moved by Ms. Coats, second by Mr. Frazier. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Reverend Collins? Reverend Collins? Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Holland-Chad?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Ms. Darby?
Yeah.
And I vote yes, and that motion carries. Item 7D, and is there any questions about the Capital Projects Report? Or item 7E, the monthly financial report? Okay, hearing none. So upcoming meetings, we will have one
twentieth.
One meeting set in July, which will be July 20th. That will be the Committee of the Whole and the regular board meeting. Now, keep in mind that there may be a potential special call meeting just in case of, as things begin to change with the COVID-19. We may have to call a meeting, a telephonic meeting, or a Zoom meeting before then or thereafter. So hearing that.
Move to adjourn.
So move. Thank you, everyone. Please be safe, and until we see each other again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Bye-bye.